What's the phone, right?
Is she?
Oh, I was invited to that party. Uh huh. Actually, I only know because Bobby told me.
Did she want that position?
It seemed pretty quiet. Normally you hear that.
Warranted. It's getting a lot better. As far as your calls, you listen. There's a lot of meetings, you know. I mean, there's always.
No.
I could, I would. I keep trying.
You'd rather.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd rather they reach out so we don't be stumbled.
Hey Greg, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Hi Greg.
Hello, everybody.
Who's on with its back feeling? Is that, is yours on?
Hello.
Yeah, they're out getting the bonding straight.
Can you hear that backfeed?
I hear backfeed.
Yeah, bad.
What's backfeed sound like?
You still got it? You hear that?
Hello, 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 hello.
One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four.
I thought that was surround sound.
Where's it coming out of? Is it coming out of there?
Actually, it's coming out of your screen. Yeah, but you probably got to mute.
You guys have to, if you're on, you have to mute.
I'm muted.
Mute it for a second. That's what we're hearing on it. One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, it's gone now.
Better on my end.
All right.
Showtime.
All right, uh, like the Ways and Means, uh, committee to order. Do you have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here, uh, City Port Huron, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present, Port Huron, Michigan, St. Clair County.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here, St. Clair County, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Bone?
Uh, here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Vanderbosch?
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner McConnell?
Uh, here, Marco Island, Collier County, Florida.
Commissioner Rushing?
Uh, here, Port Huron, Michigan. Uh, could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, line two, additions, deletion, changes to the agenda. If we have none, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? We have none. Next, we're gonna go to updates. We do have Dan Casey from EDA. If you're up and now, please give us an update.
I wanna give a little backdrop by, we have Dan here this evening. So, um, as many of you know, the industrial park in St. Clair landed a big project roughly, oh, sixty-five acres, seventy acres. The city of St. Clair put up free land for that particular property, um, with some other pretty good incentives and stuff. And I'd hate to say it, it's somewhat of an industry norm today if you're going to go out and try to competitively compete with these big projects and land them. Uh, that particular project down there, even after all the abatements and everything else, it's around five hundred and forty-four thousand a year in new taxes. So understand, even if you have to give up some of this, you know, some of these properties and you have to incentivize some of these, the long-term taxing benefit of this is substantial. If you look at like the ZF plant in Marysville, what that brought to the city of Marysville, uh, the city had to go out and acquire the property at the time, they had to do the development. Duke, you were down there, infrastructure was probably eight, ten years before you saw anything. Um, lots of jobs, but when it finally, it's all good now. You had to bag full of money on the side of the road, right? So, uh, what we, what we're, the problem that we have now today, if the next, and I won't name the, the particular company, but if we have that next ex that comes along, where do we put him, Dan Casey? Nowhere, right?
Depends on how big it is.
Yeah, well, and that particular plant's going to be upwards of three phases, upwards in a million square foot, but, um, it absolutely gives me heartache and heartburn to think that we would not have a opportunity to go land that next particular property project so, so may. So, we've been talking about some strategies earlier today, and I don't have any particular details. I'm, I'm, I'm looking to tell you where we're at, what we've done so far. Dan, to fill in, kind of where we're at the state and just to kind of get the pulse on the commissioners, if we would like to pursue and move forward, we would obviously bring a, a strategy back to this board for, you know, further action to move down. But Dan Casey, Gary Fletcher, Kerry Hepting, myself, Dave Vanderbosch, Georgia, uh, who else was in that meeting? Dave Struck, and then we had the, um, Jeff Hawkins from Envirologic on the meeting today. And, you know, we're, it's a couple of commissioners, this is gonna be a total rehash of what we talked about today for the new ones, I want you to, yeah, for the ones that didn't get a chance to hear, to hear the information. Um, really, I think there's some opportunities for us to work with the private developers of the world. I'm not pitching the county, go out and buy the next two or three hundred acres and do all the infrastructure and have to sit on it. City of St. Clair sat on that for about twenty years, though, okay? I think there is opportunities using the land bank, which is a tool that, as we had discussed today, that the land bank is able to do a lot of different things. And a lot of this actually focuses with tax recapture opportunities, right? So, working with a public-private partner, getting creative with the land bank, uh, at the end of the day, there's probably, you know, quite a few sites in St. Clair County that would be available for this type of stuff, but it's all in private ownership. Private ownership is not giving property away. They can't do tax capture. There's particular things that they can't do. So, with that, I'm just gonna defer it to Dan Casey and, uh, talk a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good evening, members of the board. So it's good to be back in front of you again to give you an update. Um, so, we are here to talk specifically about this issue and the impact that we have uh, in St. Clair County, um, due to limited number of development sites to submit for projects. So first, I wanna back up and just talk to you a little bit about how this all happens in the first place and what, whose role is what in the process. And, uh, Jeff asked me a question earlier today about where do we get our leads from, uh, for projects? So we get about thirty percent of our leads through the state of Michigan, through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Um, site consultants or companies will go directly to the MEDC with, um, a project, and they, uh, the MEDC then sends that out to all of the regional economic development agencies, where the agency in St. Clair County that gets these leads. And it's our job to respond back and submit sites and data, other information on properties. And then you go through a process of evaluation at the site consultant or the company level, where they narrow it down to a smaller group of properties. Um, and then, uh, eventually what happens is they reach out to the individual economic development agencies and begin to work one-on-one with them. So it starts at the state level, but it quickly kind of melds into working at the local level, uh, where we have relationships with folks like you, community leaders, planners and other people, and then we can gather that data that they specifically need to help them make their decision on Site A versus Site B versus, you know, Site C. And these sites can be all over the country, and in some cases, they can be in other countries. So, you know, we're part of a global economy and we're competing. That's the bottom line. So the MEDC, um, about a year ago, they hired a consultant that we know very well, from out of state, to evaluate, um, Michigan's site readiness, they call it. Uh, so these are greenfield sites that would typically be submitted for these kind of projects. And the consultant came back, and one of the things that they were asked to do was to evaluate certified development-ready sites, and I'll explain what that is in a minute, versus what Michigan does. So if you go down south, they're very strong believers down there in this certified development-ready kind of process, where communities work directly with, um, usually engineers, consultants and so forth. They, in some cases, will build entire industrial parks, they'll put in the roads, the water to the sewer, they'll do master planning, they get all the data, all the maps, everything they can to streamline the process and to make it go quickly, and then at somebody, at some point, certifies the entire park as a development-ready site. And then there are site consultants in the country that typically go to the certified development-ready sites, because they know that a lot of the data has already been verified and that the communities are ready to go, right? That they've streamlined the process to the extent that they can. Michigan doesn't have that kind of a program. It's not common in the north or in the Midwest, generally speaking. You'll also find site consultants that don't like that process. Um, they don't think it's necessary in some cases, they just want the information, right? So what the consultants did was evaluated these certified development-ready sites versus how Michigan and other states in the north do it. And they came back with some recommendations. And, so what came out of that, about two years ago, the state launched, um, a matching grant program that they call the Site Ready Program. Um, in the very first round of applications, we submitted one on behalf of the city of Port Huron for a twenty-five acre piece of property in the Port Huron Industrial Park that was owned by the city. It had water, it had sewer, it had infrastructure, um, Class A road, we had most of the maps. The problem we had is the site was pretty heavily wooded, and it was pretty expensive to knock the woods down. Well, that's an impediment. I mean, if you submit that property for some projects, they're gonna say, it's gonna take us too long to cut the woods down, we need to break ground in thirty days. We don't have time to wait. It doesn't always happen, but I'm saying that can be an impediment. So, we submitted a grant application and we're fortunate enough to get selected for a one-hundred-thousand-dollar matching grant, fifty percent match. So the city was willing to put up the other fifty percent. Now the woods is supposed to be knocked down in the next few months, um, and that will make that site that much closer and more attractive for future development, right? So, Michigan launched that program. After the first year, they got so many applications that they decided they needed to bring it back in the second year. That was last year. Now they decided they wanna continue to go forward with it into the future, and they wanna get more funding into the program so they can do more work. A lot of communities, you know, townships and so forth, they just don't have the resources to do a lot of that kind of work, right? Um, by the way, these were both public and privately owned properties that were eligible for these grants. Okay, so, now we lead into the Detroit Regional Partnership. And the DRP is a spinoff of the Detroit Regional Chamber, and now they're a completely separate organization. Um, I was fortunate enough to be involved in the launch of this organization, uh, myself and the other economic development, uh, CEOs from across the eleven-county region of the Detroit Regional Chamber. So, they did, they, they created this organization because they recognized that their one-point-five-million-dollar annual budget and their five employees paled considerably to a comparable market in Houston, where they had an eight-million-dollar budget and they had twenty-five or thirty employees and they had a lot more capability. And so they did a study, the Chamber did, and they, they looked at some of these other organizations and realized that we were woefully behind and drastically underfunded compared to our competition. And so, a bunch of CEOs, major companies in Michigan got together, especially Metro Detroit CEOs, um, and they said, we need to do something about this, we need a much better-funded, better-equipped organization in order to compete effectively. And that's what, um, launched the Detroit Regional Partnership. So they went from five employees to today they have twenty, soon they'll have twenty-two. Their budget's now four-and-a-half million dollars and going up compared to what it was before, and now we're able to do a lot more, uh, we're a lot more competitive and able to respond quicker. One of the things they did is, for example, is we now have one person at the DRP that handles St. Clair County. So when they go out and try to generate leads globally, there's one person that's representing us on those trips, or on some of those trips, that knows our industries, knows what, um, we're good at and what makes sense for our county, and then they can bring leads back to us directly. So, that launched about a year and a half ago, um, and of course, COVID has interfered with them really traveling and doing a lot of the things that, you know, we had all expected. But despite all of that, last year in their first full year, they generated over four-hundred-and-fifty-eight million dollars in, um, investment in the eleven-county region with COVID, um, and a ton of jobs, right? And I can say our communication with them is working a hundred times better. So they recognized this same problem with site readiness, and, um, they brought in a consulting team to help them create, uh, a program to deal with that. And, um, I was invited to be part of that, so I was one of the local economic development guys that helped them kind of craft the program. And so they are launching it this month at their board level, and then next month, they're actually gonna reach out and start, um, gathering twelve pilot sites from around the region. This is be, would be their first attempt to implement this program on a pilot basis, and then after that, they wanna make it full-time. So the Detroit Regional Partnership, what they do specifically is they market the region and they do business attraction. They don't do expansion, they don't do retention visits, they don't do community development, they don't do entrepreneurialism, none of those things. They only do attraction. And their job is to go get the leads and then to bring those projects to their partners. And then we work the deals with them. We do the local stuff and then they help with some of the things around the edge. Well, the MEDC is interested in this program that they've developed and they're thinking about taking it statewide. So, if the pilot is successful, which I know it will be, then it's, ultimately, we're looking at this being the way that the state goes forward and, and makes decisions on who's gonna get funded through their grant programs. So they call it the Verified Industrial Properties Program. Here's the eleven counties that are a part of it. Um, I'm gonna skip through the rest of that. But basically, they were trying to tackle this issue, um, that our sites in the Metro Detroit area are not very well-positioned for new development. Um, for example, if you come to us with a hundred-acre project, there's very few sites, there's almost no sites in Oakland County, a few in McComb, and the only ones they have in Wayne County are basically redevelopment sites in Detroit. And then over by the airport, they have some, some sites. So there's not many, um, not as many as you would probably expect. Um, so this program is expected to address that issue by identifying new sites, new greenfield sites, um, establishing a tiered system so that when they begin marketing these sites, they know that they've got everything from raw land to sites that are development-ready, right? And everything in between. And it really comes down to the site consultant or the companies picking the site that they like the best. Um, but, you and I both know that what's gonna happen is anything that's a top-tier site, that's the most development-ready, is the one that they're gonna be pushing the most when they're talking to, to clients. Okay, so, here's the five tiers. I'm not gonna go through this in detail. This is just a quick overview so you understand what we're doing here and how this eventually will relate to St. Clair County. So we have five tiers. Tier one is the lowest. Basically, uh, it's a greenfield site, we know very little about it, we might have a map, um, and that's about it, right? So it's a real, it could be just raw land, it could be anywhere. Um, it doesn't even have to have a Class A road or anything like that. Tier one sites, um, are not very marketable. Tier two sites, this is where they start to look at some basic, you, you could get the information you need on the tier two site mostly by doing internet searches, right? You can pull up a US, uh, floodplain map, for example, and you can take that map and put it, save it in your file, so if you ever get requested to submit the site for a project, you can submit the map too, right? So it includes floodplanes, wetland maps, again, US maps, and topography maps. Um, so these, this is a little bit higher standard than tier one, but still not great. Tier three is where you really start to get more information on sites, right? At this point, you're looking at what is the zoning of the property? If it's not properly zoned, locally, one of your steps is get the property rezoned. We lost a project, um, a couple of years ago, I can tell you who it is now. It was Lear Corporation. Big project, three-to-four-hundred-thousand-square-foot building, four-hundred employees. It came down to two sites, one in Flint, and our site was in St. Clair Township, and we call it the buyer property, it's two-hundred-and-eighteen acres. And, so they came back to us, Lear did, through a consultant, and they said, okay, so what is this property zoned, and if it's not properly zoned, does the city support a rezoning, and if so, how long will that take? Obvious questions, right? I couldn't give them the answer they wanted because the township didn't support industrial zoning on the property, and it was zoned for residential use. Even though, it made more sense as an industrial property because it had a lot of frontage on CSX rail line, it had heavy power, it had a lot of natural gas, and it was right next to the Chrysler plant. So, it made sense for it to be industrial, but nonetheless, the community didn't support it, so guess what? We gave them the answer, and they walked away and they did the project in Flint, right? So this process is intended to take a piece of property like that, make sure that the community supports the use, if they don't, then that's fine, we'll go somewhere else. But make sure they support the use and get the correct zoning in place, make sure you have identified where the utilities are, where the easements are, um, and is it environmentally clean, or is it a brownfield site, and if so, what, what is it gonna take to clean it up? So that's tier three. Tier four, um, the St. Clair Industrial Park was somewhere between a tier four and a tier five, based on the information we had. But a tier four is where you really, the property owner or the community has to start spending some money to do things like identify where on the site are you gonna put the building? You might have to hire a civil engineer to figure that out. You might wanna put, uh, a site plan in place for that property. For the St. Clair Industrial Park, we had an entire site plan, and we had a drainage plan that were done years ago, right? But the city of St. Clair paid their consultants to develop those maps, right? So this is the kind of detailed information that you need. Uh, in this case, it also lists rail, so if it's got rail, does it have the potential for a rail spur? And if so, where does the rail spur go, right? So that's the kind of level that you're looking for. And then finally, tier five is where you spend the most money on things like geotechnical studies. That can be twenty, thirty thousand dollars, depending on the proj, project and the size, but that tells you things like soil compaction. Do you have good soils, bad soils? That level of detail, um, uh, you wanna have a wetland delineation. Again, you gotta pay for that, that's not cheap, um, but it's a few thousand dollars. So the, at the end of the day, um, what we're trying to do is identify bigger sites, because we have smaller sites in the county. We have two acres, we have five acres, we can compete in that space. But when you get to fifty acres, right now, that are basically development-ready, we have one site in the whole county. That's it. And it's only a maximum of seventy acres, and so when you get in that one-hundred-acre, two-hundred-acre project, we don't have anything, we're out of the game. Um, we actually, about a month ago, we got a project called, uh, Project Titan, two-thousand How many of those do we have in Michigan? One, two, right? Now, so I'm not, I'm saying that's a little outside of, uh, the bounds of what we would normally see, obviously, but you get the idea. Um, there are communities that are working in this space that we're competing against. In some cases, they're offering the land for free, but in other cases, what they're doing is they're trying to get the sites ready to go. There's a big one in Chiauasi County that, uh, that's in our region, uh, we don't really compete with Chiauasi too much, but the site's on I-69, it's a couple thousand acres, they hired an engineering company, one of the people involved in this project, actually, this, this initiative, um, to work with them and to do some of the behind-the-scenes engineering work, get the maps together, put a booklet together, and so they've, that, that one particular project is much farther along than a lot of what we have. Okay, so, at the end of the day, um, we are now beginning to reach out to communities to identify some sites that can be evaluated, to see if they make sense. They have to be located in areas where we have, you know, close access to Class A roads, um, interchanges, larger blocks of land, land that isn't, uh, hampered by a lot of wetland development, because that's very expensive to mitigate, um, and also close proximity to utilities. Because if it's just any old site and it doesn't need utilities, it's not gonna be competitive, and we have a lot of that. We can find that all over the county. That's not gonna help us. We need to find sites that are close to all of these different amenities, and so that's the work that we're beginning to, to do today. Finally, uh, I'll wrap up, I know I've taken quite a bit of your time, but finally, I think it's worth pointing out that Project Seinfeld that landed at the St. Clair Industrial Park site, it landed there for a couple of key reasons. The first is, we already had a lot of information on that site, because we've been marketing it for a long time, and we've been close on a number of deals. And every deal you do, they ask you questions about stuff, and if you don't have the answers, you go and get the answers, and then the next time a prospect comes along, you've got the answer for that question, right? So after a few years, you get a lot of answers to questions ready to go. That was, that was one thing. The other thing that was key was it was municipally owned, which meant that the city had the power to negotiate some things, right? They decided they were gonna make the land available for free because they saw the value of future tax revenue. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be free land, but at least if it's in municipal control, you can negotiate those terms. If it's in the private sector's hands, you know, you're probably not gonna get free land, right? Um, that's not bad, that just, it's the reality of the situation. And finally, um, one of the commitments that we made with the St. Clair Industrial Park was, when we got requests for information, we committed to getting the information to the client within twenty-four hours. And we did that consistently throughout the project. That included things like letters of support. Two different times, they asked us to get letters of support from the college, so we did that. They asked us to get an incentive package put together from Michigan Works, so we did that, and they did that, um, and so on. So that was really key, is being able to respond quickly when the client asks for information. So that's where we're at with this program going forward. I think the county's gonna be a key partner in this, because a lot of our communities just don't have the resources or the in-house expertise to do this work. So with that, I'm gonna, um, just ask if anyone has any questions.
So my question to the commissioners, and there again, we don't have, put together, I mean, it got some different ideas and concept. Is this something that we should pursue? It's not, you know, it's probably going to be some non-traditional things that we haven't previously done at the county level, but at the end of the day, we're the only ones that have the ability, the wherewithal. You might have one or two communities that might be able to pull it off, but if you go to St. Clair, again, if you go to Marine City, if you go to, you know, they can't write those checks, you know? It's a, it's somewhat of a long game, if we've gotta get into the freelance scenario, working with a private developer, I see we could, somewhat of a pu, public-private partnership. There again, I'm not advocating for us to go out and buy and do and that stuff, but I think we could work with a, with somebody. I, I think, I think we'll have people standing in line truthfully, looking to, to do business with us if we can structure something right, and not put the county in harm's way. Um, you know, bottom line, we can't do that. And I, I look at the project in St. Clair, and I just wanted to add to that, we've handled them so well in St. Clair, that the two top-site consultants asked us to submit the additional twenty-five acres for another large project. So, that, um, kudos to Dan and his organization for getting that done. But these things happen, man. I mean, that's like, these things aren't ready to go, they're don't, it's all the wonderful world of automotive, right? I, I just inked the deal with GM, and now I gotta build that plant. I mean, that plant has to be up by June.
June and July.
It's gonna be operational in December, so you're talking from the time you break ground till the time you build a three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-square-foot plant, by the time you put all the equipment in it necessary, to do all the training, that's a one-year turnaround. So...
That's impressive.
That, it's crazy, but that's, that's, that's the timeframes and deadlines that you deal with when you're dealing with, and let's face it, we're still heavily automotive-based here, you know, whether you like it or not, we've done it for a hundred and fifty years, you know? So, the opportunities that, that we're going to see are gonna tend to be in those types of arenas, you know?
Right.
And, um...
Well, and if we wanna be ready, a rezoning can take three months, just based on the notification process. I mean, by the time it's gone through three different meetings, so if you're not ready, you can't take, you don't have three months to take to rezone a parcel. That has to be done prior and ready to go.
I think going to the communities, explaining to them what we're willing to do, how we're gonna do it, are you in or are you out, right? And I mean, not everybody's gonna wanna be in, probably majority of people wanna be out, but to find which ones are in, then it gives Dan the opportunity to go have these properties that he can, you know, market and, um, do things. As I started out earlier, it gives me heartache and heartburn to think that the next plant in St. Clair that we'd have to tell those guys, no. I mean, are, what are we always trying to do? Jobs. And I know everybody says right now, well, where are you going to get the employment, right? I get it. But I've seen 3.5% unemployment in this county. I've seen 23.5% too. So at least if you got the manufacturers' jobs, more opportunity, you know, good stuff. So I guess what I'm asking the commissioners, and there again, it's not committal this evening, but is this something that you would be willing, if we can get something put together that we could take to the street? And we'll obviously see it and sign out on it and everything before we do it. Should we be pursuing this economic development?
I would... I'm 100% on board for it. I mean, I'll go back to the ZF plant in Marysville. You know, if Marysville didn't push, push, push to get that thing done and get it happening, and the county helped us financially also on that. I mean, so I know there's a lot of different ways to do a lot of different things. But I don't see how we could possibly say no to something like this. I mean, I don't want to commit any money or anything like that, what you said. But I definitely think it's worth getting the ball rolling.
How many jobs at ZF now? 800?
Eight hundred, about 850.
Yeah. Good ones, too.
And a half million dollars a year to spread around the county.
Yeah.
I don't see no reason not to proceed. And every case will be on its own merits, every municipality. You can assist them with the zoning, but that's going to be based on everybody's master plan also. There'd be no reason not to. But I can see at least not take a look at it and go forward with it. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Have a good night.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
All four of them.
See ya.
All right, do we have any conceptual initiatives tonight? We have none. We have no old business. And new business, we have none. Do we have any other ways and means matters tonight? Seeing none, information only. We have none. Can I have a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, understand adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Human Services Committee. If someone could take the role, please.
Commissioner McCallum.
You're muted, Greg.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here, Port Huron, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Boe.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner McVey and Bob.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Bead.
Here, Port Huron, Michigan. Are there any citizens to be heard? No? Okay, moving on, updates?
You need a motion to approve the agenda, and I'll make that motion if there's no amendments to it.
I'll support.
Thank you. Moving on to updates.
You need to take a vote.
Oh, thank you.
You have a motion and a second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion that's passed? Motion carries.
I'm the new kid on the block.
That's right, you're doing right.
That's the green show. For updates, the Health Department has... Will be opening up the pre-registration signup for the COVID-19 vaccine. It'll go live tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. Anyone that is 65 and older that needs assistance is welcome to call the Council on Aging or 211 for that. Although the registration is... Will be open online at the Health Department website. So I encourage people to go there. Other updates from the library system. They have opened up limited in-branch services, and they are still offering curbside services to residents. So I take advantage of that. And then finally, the Council of Aging met. They just recently had their audit, which went well. They're currently recruiting for open vacancies and engaging with their community partners to meet some of their goals and initiatives. Any questions? No, just...
None for me.
Okay. Moving on to conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
There's no old business at this time, so we'll move on to new business. We have presented before you the Health Advisory Board reappointment.
I would move that be sent to the full board.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Let's take the vote. Oh, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Also in your packet is the Hub Memorandum of Understanding with Inner West. Make a motion. Send it to the full board, right? Support. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other Human Services matters to be brought before at this time? Information only? Hearing none? Can I have a motion to receive and file the packets?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Nice job.
Nice job, Leo.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the public safety to order roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here, Port Huron, St. Clair County, Michigan.
Commissioner Bead?
Here, Port Huron, Michigan, St. Clair County.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner Boe?
Here, Port Huron.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Commissioner McVey and Bob?
Here, Port Huron.
Commissioner McCallum?
Here. Okay, I got to just pull... Pulled up Environmental and Public Works there real quick. We do have in addition item 2A, contract approval request from Everbridge for final action. I'd like to move that to 7H if we could.
Support.
We have motion in support to make that item 7H. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, done. Second, bone.
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any citizens to be heard?
None.
Seeing none, are there any updates? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have no old business. Under new business, 7A, the Fiscal Year 21 Marine Safety Grant Application. The Marine Safety Grant is something we've been applying for and receiving for years. It's a... Last year was 171,550. And this year, we applied for an average of three years of actual expenses that we base it on. So I'm looking for a motion to send to the full board.
So moved. Support.
Carrie, you want to talk a little bit about that? I just... I asked Carrie to chime in on a few of these, just because this is pretty routine stuff. But along, and just hear how the work process.
So the Marine Safety Grant does fund our Marine Patrol. And the grant is based on our prior three years' worth of expenditures. We receive federal funds and state funds as part of the grant. Our federal funds we receive require no match, and the state funds require a 25% match. Quite a few years ago, probably around '08, '09, what would happen is, at that time, the board had decided that with grants, they would only do the required match and no additional. So unfortunately, how this grant works is as you spend less money, you get less grant funds. So the county's match would go down, and the budget would go down each year. So our Marine Patrol funds started to erode. So we kind of, you know, after several years in discussion, we took the position that we were going to keep their budget flat to stop the erosion of our grant funds. So now, we are required to match approximately $22,000. However, we put in about $90,000 of county funds. And that split changes depending on how much of this grant is going to come through as state and federal funds. The state funds are usually somewhere around $80,000 to $85,000.
Perfect. Any other questions? We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7B, the Fiscal Year 21 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program subcontract with Blue Water DRP. This is to provide drug and alcohol testing for the mental health court in the amount of $21,000. Do we need a motion to send to full board if we could?
So moved, done.
Support, Bead in.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7C, contract approval request. The next contract approvals are all going to be for the Circuit Court Family Division, and they're all the same as they were last year with the 2% increase. So item 7C is a $7,500 contract with Frank Mitchell. So if we could send that to the full board?
Greg, before we have a motion and a second, I'd like Carrie just to give some history, if you can, on where we were at before, what we're doing now with court-appointed and how the...
Well, these contracts are different than item G, the Public Defender's Office. These next couple are through the Circuit Court Family Office, and these are the attorneys that are needed to help the defendants that go through the Circuit Court Family Office. These have been contracted for, boy, as long as I can remember. They were never paid similar to the court-appointed attorneys you would see in regular circuit or district court. We've had these monthly contracts in place for quite some time.
Very good. If there's no more questions, all in favor?
Send it to the full board.
Support, done.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7D, the contract request is for Esther Law, PLLC, in the amount of $29,437.20. Motion to send that to the full board?
Baldwin, so moved. Support, Bead in.
We have motion in support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7E, this is contract approval request for Robert Carson, PC, also for $29,437.20 for the 31st Circuit Court Family Division.
Baldwin, so moved.
Done.
We have motion in support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7F, also for $29,437.20, Sharon Parrish. Motion to send to the full board?
So moved, Bead in.
Support.
Rushing.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7G, this is $50,000, two $25,000 grants for 50... Or expenditures for to-be-determined part-time attorneys that are going to be working for the Public Defender's Office.
Carrie, let's give some backdrop on that.
So what these two attorneys are going to do is we need them to handle the arraignments, the council at first appearance. Those were traditionally stages in the legal process where you would not have a court-appointed attorney. But when the indigent defense standards went into place, that was one of the standards, that you have to have attorneys at those different stages. So logistically, we have to have someone at our three locations. We would have to have someone in Marine City, Port Huron, and at the jail for these arraignments. You know, certainly with this past year, with the different Zoom and video conferencing, that's changed a little bit. But our existing staffing, to be able to devote their time to be there for arraignments, has been quite difficult. So our public defender had determined that this would be the best way to contract with attorneys to just do those services. Public defender employees and staff will still handle as needed and weekend arraignments as well.
Can you talk about how we used to do it and how, because the public defender thinks barely knew for us?
So our Public Defender's Office has been in place for about a year. Prior to that, we would contract out with various attorneys, and they would be paid an hourly rate. And they would get assigned basically from a roster that had about 40 different attorneys on it. That system was in place, and it worked... It worked well for a long time. But when the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission was formed and put these standards into place, we found it was increasingly difficult to manage the standards, that number of employees. And we felt a public defender system, basically mirroring the prosecuting attorney's office but for defense, would be a more efficient way to deliver the service to the clients.
More efficient, less costly. Our costs were going to go through the moon.
So the cost to the Public Defender's Office is we receive funding from the state of Michigan each year as part of the standards to implement them. Any additional costs to the county are to be funded through the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. You know, certainly that is subject to annual appropriation. But our local share was set based on our costs. And for, I think the base years were 11, 12, and 13, or maybe 10, 11, 12. I don't remember the exact years that they said. That's basically your cost, and your cost can't go down. So if our revenues and our collections go down, then we have to make up that difference within our budgets. We certainly saw a reduction last year due to COVID. I don't believe that'll be a permanent item. So I think going forward, we'll be in good shape.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yes, thank you. So we need a motion in support?
So moved, bone. Support, done.
There's no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 7H, the contract approval request for Everbridge. This is a $38,337 contract between the Health Department Emergency Management. This system actually works with our Everbridge Mass Notification Software Program that we currently have. And I don't know, Carrie, if you could talk to us about what's going on with this?
So as Commissioner Bead spoke on earlier, the system will be up and operational for citizens to log in and pre-register starting tomorrow to receive their COVID vaccine. And it works very similar to the WIN system. So citizens will be able to go in and pre-register. This isn't giving them an appointment, it's getting them on the list or in the queue. And then when they are scheduled an appointment, they will receive a notification with whatever means they sign up for, whether it be email, text message, or a phone call, saying your appointment is this date, this time. Then they will have a chance to respond, yes or no, to accept the appointment, or to say, I no longer need the vaccine, if they're on a list or they were able to get it elsewhere. So if they accept the appointment, they'll receive a verification, they'll be set for their time slot. If they're unable to go to that time, then they will press no. And then what happens is they go back in the queue, and they'll get... And to get a new appointment. But saying no does not put them to the bottom of the list to start over. They stay at the top of the list to try to reschedule a new appointment. So I think this is going to alleviate a lot of the frustration that the Health Department, you know, has been experiencing with our current scheduling system, and certainly from the citizens that have been having a lot of difficulty scheduling the appointments for our clinics. This way, they know they're on the list, and when the vaccines are available, This way, they know they're on the list, and when the vaccines are available, they will be contacted with an available appointment.
And Carrie, how do they contact somebody?
When someone signs up on the WIND system, they will say their preferred method. So if they want to receive an email, if they want to receive a text message, or just a phone call would be one of the...
How do they contact the WIND system?
Oh, how do they send?
Just 211?
So if they are unable to go to our website to sign up, they can call 211 for assistance, or for those over the age 65, they can contact the Council on Aging for assistance. We will have a hotline at the Health Department that is not fully set up yet, but it will be soon that citizens will also be able to call a hotline at our Health Department.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any other questions?
I got to give Carrie and Georgia and others, Lisa, you guys that have been working on this, because I know it was a little dicey in the beginning, received some emails on, you know, trying to get signed up. I know you guys have been meeting on a weekly basis to get this thing ironed out, so kudos to you. Thank you.
So this contract, I did sign the purchase order last week because we felt this was kind of an emergency need, so it is a little bit outside of policy. However, we are allowed to make those approvals on emergency basis.
So I'll do it for final.
So this is for approval after the fact.
So I need a motion for final approval, if I could?
So moved. Support, Beeden.
We have motion and support. Roll call, please.
No, he's got questions.
Why didn't Emergency Management and the Health Department, why didn't they bring this to us earlier? Because I mean, they kind of knew the, they were going to have, you know, upwards of 70,000 people to inoculate. This was kind of, I think the Health Department kind of dropped the ball on this a little bit?
No, so the Everbridge system is fairly new, and I know our officials at Emergency Management and Public Health are on constant calls, talking to their peers, and finding out the best way to manage this system. You know, certainly at the beginning, at the onset of this, we had no idea the volume of vaccines we would be receiving. And from citizens, we didn't know how many people would sign up. You hear a lot of people aren't interested and a lot of people are. So we certainly did not want to put a system in place that was not going to work. We did work internally, and we were working on an internal system. But then when we got the demo from the Everbridge system that was already built and has been working successfully in other communities, but it has not, it's not, the system hasn't been up for months and months. It is fairly new. And after approving the PO last week, you know, we were able to get it up and operational within a week. So that's a very fast turnaround time for a system we already use that's been successful. So...
So the Health Department did try internal systems that they already had, the TELA, TELA something, there was one. And what, at the same time, they got more requests than they anticipated and way less vaccines than they anticipated. So trying to schedule this out when people were signing up, they had ordered thousands of vaccines and they got 600 in. And so that did, you know, I liken it to, you know, if you ever tried to buy concert tickets, it's a $100,000 or 100,000-person venue, and the tickets sell out in two minutes. So imagine 60,000 people going on for 600 vaccines, and it was just going. So what that system did not allow was for someone to wait in a queue. So the Everbridge system that came out actually was designed after states started rolling out their vaccination process. And so it wasn't available when they first started building systems, is my knowledge, right? So they thought, "We can handle this internally, we already have the programs that..." Because they already do vaccination clinics for the flu each year, so they thought they'd be able to use their existing things. So the Everbridge one came up a little later, because Everbridge didn't have that available until other states and other people started requesting it. And so then, you know, then they started looking at it and go, "Okay, this might be a system," because half of our residents are already used to signing up for WINDs and things like that. Anyone who is a client of the Council on Aging is already in the WIND system, so that's what makes that a real natural partnership too with Council on Aging. But the WINDs, or the, I'm sorry, the Everbridge Vaccination Program hadn't been created until maybe about a month ago. So there's a little bit of timing on that, that they really were hoping that what we had in place internally was going to work. Then, so the state decides your phases, right? They decide who can get vaccinated and when, and then kind of with no notice, open it up to 65 and over. So that threw another wrench in something that wasn't, maybe, you know, in hindsight, maybe they could have foreseen that, but really thought that there would be more vaccines and more time in between the rollout of the different phases. Because I think now we're in 1B, Group B, and I don't know if that was planned for a little time yet. So it's been a little clunky, but it's been a little clunky across the state and quite honestly, across the nation. You talked to Dr. Mercantant, she says that you got on the phone with 50 health departments, and they're doing it 49 different ways. And every, everyone has a problem, you know. So this might be a really great solution over here, but it created a couple of problems over there, and that's what they were running into.
Yeah, I can, this isn't the norm, Dave, and I know what you're saying. You know, how come so-and-so? And I can tell you, as long as she's been our administrator, I can't ever think of you signing a contract not, but in emergency situations like this, trying to get these things up and running. I know I was having all kinds of phone calls, I don't know if you were getting anything, but I'm trying to get on that goddamn thing, and in two minutes, it kicks me out. You know, I mean, just a lot of frustration, I guess. And I would view this, I guess, a little bit different if we've got to give Carrie a little bit of leverage on this one, you know?
I have a question. And I support this. I mean, it's great what got done and all the efforts to get this done. Just for discussion, because we're going to take a vote here, let's say another issue. If this was devoted down tonight, what would happen? Just a question.
Yeah, I don't know.
What?
I don't know.
We wouldn't have the system.
Well, you've already okayed the system, and it's already going to be up and running tomorrow. Just, let's just say, Project ABC, six months down the road, something similar happens.
Well, Commissioner, I think you've worked with me long enough to know that this may, in my 22 years here, be one of the only times I've made an exception to a board policy. Under a state of emergency, which we are under, the county administrator does have the ability to enter into contracts on an emergency basis without board approval. So this contract, in my opinion, would still be valid. However, I thought it was important to bring it to the Board of Commissioners, so you're aware of what's going on. And certainly, I never, you know, as most of you know, I am the biggest rule follower, so to do something outside of policy is pretty unusual for me. But we felt it was important, because, you know, to go through the full boarding committee process is just delaying something and adding to community frustration, and this was a top priority.
Kudos to you, Carrie. I think you did the right thing.
Nice job. We know she's a miser, trust me.
Well, and hopefully, we won't see another pandemic or a large... And actually, is it not, so if you have the ability to make decisions under a state of emergency, then it's really not a violation of policy to the letter?
Correct. But also, you know, going forward, for potential FEMA funding and stuff like that, we want to make sure that, you know, we dot every i and cross every t, because we certainly don't want to miss out on any potential grant funding, because we may have deviated from a policy.
Sure.
I'll make a motion if you don't have it yet, Greg, for final action.
Yeah, we have a motion and support.
Yeah, we have motion and support. We need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Beeden?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanenbush?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters at this time?
Commissioner McConnell, I just wanted to say that I had a citizen reach out to me regarding the public defender's office, and so I put a call into Mr. Boucher on a Friday evening, or Friday late afternoon. Within a half an hour, he responded back and said, "I'm sorry for the delay," which I thought, "Oh, my gosh, it's a half an hour." Like, that's not even a delay. But took my call, called me back on a Friday evening after hours and got everything handled. The citizen was happy within three or four days' time. But it was really, it was my first dealings with that office, and it was, it was really great. So the customer service and the level of response was pretty amazing.
Perfect. That's good to hear. Is there anything else? Motion to receive and file packets?
So moved, done.
Support, Rushing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support, Vanenbush.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Good evening. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order, and could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Mr. Beeden?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here, Port Huron, Michigan.
Mr. Vanenbush?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here. Item number two, could I get a motion for the agenda, please?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens to be here tonight?
No.
Nothing tonight. Any updates from commissioners? I have one. I spent an hour or so over at the community mental health with Deb Johnson and kind of walked through that. That's one of my assignments this year, so I've got hands around it. She said she hasn't been here in a while. If we would like her to stop in any time and give us any updates about her budget or anything, she would be more than willing to stop by. If anybody's ever interested in that, just let me know. Conceptual initiatives.
I'm sorry, none this evening.
Thank you. Seeing no old business. Item seven, new business. Item A is going to be for final action, Resolution 2101, Michigan Lighthouse Assistance Program Grant Application Resolution Correction. Mr. Brochure is here tonight, so if he would like to speak on this.
Thank you. Very quickly, the Michigan Lighthouse Assistance Program is a state grant program funded by the specialty license plates with lighthouses on them. Several years ago, we got a grant from them for replacing two roofs at the light station. Since then, we have submitted grant applications every year, and we don't hear anything from them. And then in May, they announced the people that do went. Well, this year, we changed up our request and asked for money to renovate the lantern room and the watchroom, the kind of the highlight of that lighthouse tour. Well, we've been getting phone calls back from them left and right. Unfortunately, they keep changing their minds, and what we have is a grant program, $25,000. The Friends of the Fort Grashat Light have pledged the $8,333 local match. Nothing has changed there. What they want from your resolution keeps changing. First, they wanted specifically it would be the Friends, then they were going to require all the financial data from the community foundation. Dennis met with them on Tuesday. "Oh, no, no, we'll do it this way." I wrote the resolution in front of you based on what that meeting was on Tuesday morning. They called them later on in the, the next day and said, "We've changed our mind, can you do this?" So what I'm going to ask you, and they said, when they said that, "We know we keep moving the finish line for you. If this takes longer to get it approved by your board, we understand." So all I would ask for you tonight, rather than doing final action, is just do action, recommend to the board the wording we have. We'll send that to Lansing and have them say, you know, once and for all, they'll accept it or not. If they want us to tweak it again, we can do it at the full board meeting, but we don't need to do final action tonight. The good news is they keep giving us feedback, which means we're still in the running, so I think that's a good thing.
So you can send them a draft?
Yeah.
Okay. That doesn't have to be signed?
No, they'll, I'll just tell them this has been moved on for final action, double-check the language.
I don't see any reason not to have it for final action, because you already have on here, you're going to resend a previous one. We can always resend this.
Yeah, okay, if you don't mind rescinding a third or fourth time, that's okay with me.
It's going to expedite it.
Yeah.
I think we should do final action.
Okay, so you won't hold it against me if I... Okay, okay, good. Thank you. I've never asked you to resend a resolution before. I don't want to do a third time, but it might happen.
Understand. I'll make a motion that's to be approved for final action tonight.
Support, McConnell.
I have, I was just going to say...
I'm sorry, Greg.
You got a question, Greg?
He's supported.
I just supported.
I was just going to say, for new commissioners, we have a Friends of the Lighthouse group, which is a separate group that does a bunch of fundraising, the lighthouse, they do all kinds of stuff. So you will see them, a lot of times, put up some matching dollars to do stuff like this. So this is not a thing that, it's not, something that's not common.
Any other questions for Mr. Brochure? Thank you, Mark.
Can I, just, can I, for years, you've, we've submitted additional information that's listed at the end of your agenda. We have now systematically, I send you the meeting packet for the Parks and Recreation Commission by email. I hope you take advantage of that. That information that's in there is the same information we give to Chris and is included in your packet. I just want to confirm whether you want it still included, the finance committee minutes, and the financials still to be submitted, or is that email you get from me with Park Commission full packet?
It goes on our agenda, so at least when you give it to them, it goes right in their agenda, so when you got...
Okay. I'm happy to continue to do it, but we hadn't talked about it in a long time.
Yeah, it's not an easier mechanism when you pull that up, like it comes up on our computer.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
I have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the landfill asphalt paving project. Spent some time, along with Georgia, out at the landfill a couple of weeks ago, and Matt showed us the areas that he's haven't paved. It looks like it's very much needed. So he had seven bids presented, so if I could get a motion to send this to the full board?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C is for final action, and Kathy is with us tonight, so if anybody has any questions, it's the underground fuel storage tank removal change order number one and two.
Actually, Kathy, get a little history lesson for us.
Yep.
And then, and while you're up there too, I guess you can talk about that and get into the, because we have three other items coming up for the renewals, at least, it's kind of how the, some we can lease, some are ownership and all that, so...
Just for the new commissioners, the fall of 2003, the board purchased a, what we call a corporate hangar, to enhance our services at the airport, which we house the jets and corporate aircraft in there. Along with that sale came an underground fuel farm that's, at this point now, is 33 years old. The Eagle is forcing, or did force us to remove that fuel farm because of its age. It was removed four or five weeks ago. The environmental group that you approved to remove those did their testing as they were removing it. The Eagle was there to remove it, and it came back not severely contaminated, but underneath the fuel tanks themselves as they were pulling them. The water that was under there has some contamination. What they're saying is that it's not raw material, so that's our positive. It's not raw, it's old. ERG, which is our environmentalist, is thinking that it's probably in the upwards of over 20 years old. Carrie and I both have looked through everything we could find to see if there was any environmental done before that corporate hangar was purchased, and we can't find anything. So the good news is, is that it's old contamination. The bad news is, is that we have to follow what Eagle is requiring of us to make sure that it's clear and free underneath there. So ERG, once this is settled, or once you approve it, they'll bring the monitoring system out, and they're going to get, they'll get data from it, and then there's four, three or four of them that will pull water samples and dirt samples through these monitorings. Then we can get them back into Eagle to see where we stand on that. We have agreed that they will not do any more work without change order and without your approval, just because we don't want to get into any issue with that, so...
Thanks, Kathy. Do you want to update everybody on the other three items that are...
The other three items, commissioners, are, they're ground leases for the Air Industrial Park. They're in upwards of 30 years. Again, they have expired 30 years. Two of them are new leases. They are currently paying 5.7 cents per square foot. The new ground lease set by the FAA, and again by this board, is 11 cents a square foot, so it gives us additional revenue, keeps it in a fair marketable. And then there's one option on here that Mr. Cott would like to keep his lease agreement, option agreement, to move forward if he wanted to develop further.
Lots out at our airport, I don't know, because of how the federal funding or whatever, we can't sell them. They're for lease only. Some of the lots are available for sale.
For sale, and, yes.
Utilities. It's just, it's a real funky, what you can do, what you can't do, which lot you can sell, which ones have to lease, that kind of stuff.
Is there a master plan for the whole, you know?
The airport has an, what the MDOT and the FAA requires is that we have an airport layout plan. And in 2016, that was totally renewed. It was probably about 12 or 13 years old at that time, and that was redo, redone by the FAA, by MDOT Office of Aeronautics. So we have a fairly new airport layout plan, but no, we do not have a master plan. If the FAA were to approve a master plan, it's pretty intense if they were to approve such a thing, you know, for future development, but we do not have a master plan.
Okay. And even, maybe not even an approved one, but just so, if we had an idea, or you had an idea?
You mean an in-house master plan?
Yeah, what properties can be leased, what can be sold, what can be built there. I mean, I don't know how often it comes up that someone's interested.
We can certainly create one, so that we're all on the same page, if that's what you're thinking, so that we can work as...
Oh, I don't want to put it more, I just wondered if something existed, or, you know, I don't know, talking about industrial properties, you know, what does the airport have available?
We have exhibit maps and things like that, that show us where, what's leasable, what's aeronautical, what's non-aeronautical, what's, I mean, we have that stuff. I can certainly send it to you if you want to look at it, but...
I have an unrelated question while you're hearing it. I have an unrelated question while you're here, and it just popped into my head. So, there's some large tracts of land that we're looking at, you know, around the county, somewhere down by the airport, down in Marine City, that type of stuff. What are the restrictions on, on height of buildings, how in the runway? Is there somebody that could, could answer those questions? So, if we said, you know what, we've got this piece of property, it's X amount of acreage, what would be, you know, and it's located by the airport, what restrictions would go along with that property as far as heights and what you can do, what you can't do?
I can get you that, I can...
Is that a formula that they have, or is that, is that something?
The FAA requires any development, any, that has anything to do with the grant assurances, they, they require that, it's called a seventy-six forty form. So, basically, it doesn't matter what you're building, it doesn't matter what you're doing there, if it has a grant assurances attached to it, we have to send that form into the FAA. They instantly approve it or they disapprove it. So, in that form goes your heights restrictions, what your land use is, that kind of thing.
Sounds back to being preemptive. Is there the ability to get that question answered now, you know, with quote-unquote stamp of approval, before we go through all these? Because as you heard earlier tonight, I, I can't wait sixty or ninety days for approval of the building comes up, you know, the heights or so on, and it's not going to work. I'd like, I'd like to know it right out of the...
Right, now, I can get that for you. Yeah.
So, I'll circle back.
I can get that for you.
Is there any local zoning that comes into play, or is it all just...
Just building, just building requirements, yeah.